Remember how to turn down my phone.
Ready on the, on the right? Okay.
Thank you.
All right. You guys ready on the left? Good to go? Like to call this April the 11th, 2022, meeting of the Rockham County School Board to order. Welcome to all of you here this evening. I know we have a lot of students, show of hands of students. Welcome, folks. And if you have questions afterwards, feel free to, to catch one of us and ask. The first item on our agenda tonight is to approve tonight's agenda, and I will entertain a motion in that regard.
I move we approve the agenda as presented.
Thank you, Ms. Lores, there a second?
A second.
Thank you, Mr. Cross. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That is five oh, thank you all. Please join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
This time, I ask that you join us for a moment of silence. Thank you. Next, we will move on to comments from the public. Again, there is a three-minute, three-minute period in which to make comments. There will be a timer, we will, I will give you a signal at, at thirty seconds to go so that you don't have to be concentrating so much on the timer versus your comments. And as always, we ask that each and everyone be respectful of those who are speaking and give them the opportunity to utilize their three minutes without interruption. Having said that, I'd call on, the first person is Steve Shiflett. Mr. Shiflett?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Steve, thank you all for letting me speak. On or around 310, 2022, I spoke with Tim Turner, Broadway High School Boys Baseball Coach, and agreed to serve as a volunteer assistant baseball coach for the program. We believed that my experience as a high school and college-level umpire would serve the team very well. After meeting with Ryan Ritter, Broadway High School Athletic Director, I applied for this volunteer position by completing the employment application. I'll begin by saying that I'm currently seventy-one years old, and I'm a hundred percent disabled veteran. And in retrospect, I should have asked for assistance in completing the application. The application, I believe, was extremely long, arduous, and quite frankly, challenging for me. While answering the many questions, I answered a question incorrectly. Specifically, the question was, as I recall, something to the effect, have you been convicted of anything other than a minor traffic violation? I have never been convicted of a felony, so I answered no. Understanding that I have paid for four background checks in the past year to be an NCAA umpire, a Virginia High School League umpire, purchased a firearm, and obtained a concealed carry permit, all of which came back clear. I can only assume that when I answering the question, I believed I was answering regarding a felony and answering with a guard to anything current. Again, I have not had any felonies ever. In nineteen eighty-two, however, forty years ago, and while being hospitalized and treated for PTSD as a result of my service to my country in the Vietnam War, I was found guilty of two misdemeanors, neither of which had anything to do with children, drugs, child pornography. I can only assume and speculate at this point, but I believe the question was specific to anything recent and for felonies. Forty years was a lifetime ago, and has become a very distant memory for me. Again, in retrospect, I should have asked for assistance. I admit to this board that I made a mistake by checking the incorrect box on the application, but it was not my intention to misrepresent or to lie. It should be apparent by my willingness to appear here tonight and make this statement. Again, I have paid for four background checks in the last year, all came back clear. The mistake is fixable, and that's what I'm attempting to do this evening, to get this fixed so I can help the Broadway High School Boys Baseball Program offer my skills and experience as a high school and college umpire and volunteer as an assistant coach. Yes, I have two misdemeanors forty years ago, but here are some of the contributions to society and local communities. I was given an honorable discharge from the Marine Corps, served as board chairman for two local churches, and past president of the Broadway Lions Club, and was a recipient of a Melvin Jones Fellowship, which is the highest award for service to the community that one can achieve. I've served as deputy commissioner for the Valley Baseball League and just finished eight years serving on the Broadway Planning Commission, and recognized honorably at a recent town council meeting, all of which was reported on the Daily News Report. I paid my dues and have proven over the past forty years that I am an upstanding member of our community and no threat to our children, the program, or the community. To the contrary, for the coaching staff at Broadway High School, I am an asset to the program. I spoke with Oscar Scheichel, sorry, I don't know how to really pronounce it.
Mister?
On Tuesday, four-five, and he indicated his decision in this matter was final, and I know appeal was possible. However, after texting with my school guard rep, Jackie Lorr, I understand that appeal is possible, thus the reason for my attendance here tonight. I ask you, as a board, reconsider my application and allow me to volunteer with the Broadway High School Boys Baseball Team. Would any of you have any questions for me?
No, sir, not at this time. I don't, I don't know if any of the other board members do.
I just want to thank you for your service.
Yeah.
Our military, military.
Thank you.
Not only want to thank you for your service, but I will check into this with Ms. Lorr and, and see what we can do. I want people like you serving in our community.
Well, there's a time constraint. As you know, the baseball scene's already started.
Absolutely.
And I have stopped all contact with the team. We have a game tomorrow night, and I'd like to be there.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Okay, but I'll give you each one of the call.
Thanks. Next is Michael Stempel. Apologize if I mispronounced that.
Oh, sorry, sir. I had to use my iPad. All right. Thank you for this opportunity to speak to you, you all today. In the last school board meeting, I pointed out sexual and other content contained in the Bible that could be considered inappropriate for children. The purpose of my comments was not to disparage the Bible. I find great inspiration from the Bible. Pastor Burrell from Melton rightly pointed out in comments after me that God does not condone those actions in the Bible that I mentioned. I simply took the passages out of context of a larger story, which is what folks are doing when they cite specific passages of books they find inappropriate. Let's look at the Bible for an example. John 3:16 is one of the most quoted verses in the Bible here in America, right? For God so loved the world that he gave his only son, that whoever believes him shall not perish but have eternal life. I don't often hear that verse quoted in context with verse seven, or excuse me, verse seventeen, which says, "For God did not send his son to the world to condemn the world, but to save the world through him." I think that changes the meaning a bit when you add the context of verse seventeen. Context is important. In addition to the immediate context, the larger context is important as well. Even though it contains content that could be considered inappropriate for children, I believe the overall narrative of the Bible is a positive one. God's redeeming love for his creation is revealed over and over again throughout the text. When thinking about the books on the so-called banned list, I'm more concerned about the overall message than I am about specific passages. But even if I don't like a particular book in a school library, that doesn't mean I get to decide for everyone else what is and isn't appropriate for their children. Just as Pastor Burrell mentioned in his comments in the previous school board meeting, be a filter for your child as a parent. Protect your children, teach them your values, and if you are concerned about certain books, you can tell the school to not allow your son or daughter to have access to the material that you find objectionable. Submit materials for review as outlined in the March fourteenth, school board meeting, but we don't, parents will get to decide what other children have access to in the library. That is up to their parents, the children, those children's parents and their set of values, not the parents who want to ban books. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm sorry, what's your name again?
Michael Stempel, Broadway.
Michael Stempel.
Yep. David Brigham.
Good evening, David Brigham, seventy-five, fifty-six Mountain Valley Road in Kiesel Town. I would point out that much of the material in that book that you references violates the school board's own policy about names that you can and cannot call other children in the school division, but that's not why I'm here tonight. I'm here tonight to talk quickly about a document that I obtained via FOIA request from the schools. It's called a student support plan. And although Mr. Breeden before the September thirteen, I mean, the November twenty thirteen school board election said the school board passed no policy that would allow opposite-sex bathroom use, that student support plan, which is a document to be used between schools and students, gives the student and the student's parents the opportunity to choose what bathroom this student wants to use, whether it be a single-seater or gender-specific bathroom, which indicates to me that on the Friday before the school board election in November twenty thirteen, you lied to the community. You lied to the community about a policy, and Oscar wasn't school board chairman then, it was, I mean, superintendent then, it was Dr. Finn, but you lied to the community when you said you passed no policy that would allow opposite-sex bathroom use. Last July, I believe, Dr. Scheichel testified at a board hearing that your policy doesn't need changing to require, to comply with Virginia law. So you lied to the community, you were standing there right behind him when he lied to the community in the school board's one and only press conference they've ever had. You need to resign. You need to resign. You've done the community a disservice. You are the least trusted governmental entity in Rockingham County, and it's because of you. You illegally blocked people from your Facebook page, so people who comment against you can't do it anymore, and that violates the First Amendment. But it's time for you guys to get off the board directly before you're removed. Thank you.
Thank you. And the answer to that request on my behalf is no. Dan Garber.
My name is Dan Garber. I am the, one of the founding pastors of the Potter's House Worship Center in Harrisonburg. I live at three oh two Erickson Avenue. I'm not afraid to say where I live because I'm proud of, of my, my position. It is a privilege for me to speak here tonight. I want to thank each of the five of you who give your time and serve this board. It is a thankless task, as you know, and you will never please everyone. You only need to look to Jesus to see that that's not going to be possible. But my, my issue tonight, and the goal I bring before this board, is a mindset that says, as a board, you have a responsibility to, to allow or not allow certain books with certain material in them in our schools, period. Now, I'm pretty sure that most of you, of the five of you, would not allow your children or grandchildren to see or have books like this in your house. You, you wouldn't allow them to read this stuff, you wouldn't allow them to probably even watch it on TV. Somehow, parents have not been given the privilege to decide what should and should not be in our school. And to counter what the gentleman said, we do have a voice, and we will elect a different board if these books are not moved. I'll just say that right up front. I'm here to take issue with two books. The first one is The Absolutely True Diary of a Part-Time Indian by Sherman Alexie. The second book is The Hate U Give, which was recommended by one of your teachers and is in your libraries, your libraries. The content of book number one is utterly astounding and despicable. I would ask you to read it, and if you approve of that book and the content of that book to be in our school libraries, then we have a huge problem. It is available to Rockingham County Public Schools. It is, it is shocking, and it is shameful. Fifty-one seconds. I would ask that you allow such a book, that you would allow such a book should be eliminated and removed. The second book is The Hate U Give, thirty-three thousand words, eighty-eight F-bombs. Now, it was said by someone recently that, well, if you do the math and you, and you break down the numbers from thirty-three thousand to eighty-eight, not so bad. And to that, I want to just tell you a story. Father was having a difficult time trying to control the content of what his children were watching on TV and in movies. He would say, that word is not appropriate, that scene is not appropriate, and they would say, but Dad, it's just a little, it's just a little. And they heard that, he heard that over and over. I promise I'll be very quick. So he went in, he decided one night he was going to make brownies for dinner. So he went in, he decided one night he was going to make brownies for dinner. He cooked the brownies, set them on the table at the end of the meal. The children saw, "Wow, Dad made brownies." Everyone was excited. They about to dive into the brownies. He said, "Oh, oh, there's just one thing I wanted to let you know. I went in the backyard and took a little bit of poop and mixed it in with the brownies." Now, not very much, and you probably won't even notice it's there, but I just wanted to tell you before you read it or before you eat it. No one wanted any brownies that night.
Thank you, Mr. Garver. Thank you all. We will move to highlights by board members, and I will begin with Mr. Falk. Thank you. Dr. McQuilkin.
Thank you, Mr. Breeden. There are a lot of, there are many highlights this evening, but I would like to point out one. We have four students who went, who go to the governor's school and went to the regional science fair recently. And out of those four students who presented projects at the science fair, two were from Rockingham County. And the two from Rockingham County both received first-place awards. One was Ava Grace Florrie from Turner Ashby, and she, she had a project in microbiology. And the second one was Will St. John's from East Rockingham High School, and his was in physics and astronomy. But lo and behold, we found out, and I believe this is a first, that we had a grand prize winner. Out of over 5 million students, only 1,500 are selected to go to the International Science Fair, and that was Will St. John. He received the grand prize award, and we are very proud of these students, as we are proud of all of our students, whether they receive awards or they don't receive awards.
Thank you. Ms. Lor?
Thank you. My first highlight is the musical Annie. Was it J. Frank Hilliard, the weekend of April 1st? And it was amazing. There's such amazing talent in Rockingham County Public Schools. I'm so proud of all of our students. And if you haven't had a chance to get, see a musical, Elkton Middle is doing Shrek May 12th through the 14th. So that's your last opportunity this year to see a Rockingham County Public Schools musical, and they are amazing. I highly recommend that, and I want to thank everyone who has participated in musicals this year. So another thing I'm super proud of, of our students, we just have the most amazing students. And I had the opportunity, the school board had a luncheon at Broadway High School with all the Broadway principals, Broadway area principals, and we had some student service. And I had the opportunity to meet some amazing students. One even wants to be an actuary. How many y'all know what an actuary is? It's a really hard math job. And I mean, most people don't say, "I want to be an actuary when I grow up." So I was just so impressed. And another student wants to be a teacher. In this day and age, I'm just so proud that we still have students that want to be teachers. So it was, it was so great to see students and meet students. And oh, we have a lot of students here tonight, don't we? And if you went to the Board of Supervisors meeting, they would make you all get up and tell why you're here and what you're planning on doing, which sounds like fun, but we all want to go home tonight, don't we? So I will move on, but just know, I am proud of all of you and so impressed with the caliber of students we have in Rockingham. We also have great teachers in Rockingham. And there was a, the Mass Nutt and Regional Library had an essay contest to honor teachers. And full disclosure, my friend Herschel Hoffeditz won first place with his essay about Becky Harrison, his math teacher. So we would like to congratulate both of them. Our runners-up were Mont Video Middle School, Olivia Spitzer, Sarah O. Misko?
Maroski.
Maroski. I knew I was going to get that wrong. Sarah Maroski was the teacher. And then from Mountain View Elementary, Leila Thompson honored, is it Mandy O'Neal? Ms. O'Neal. And then, oh, there's, and then, oh, yes, of course, Folks Run, our Broadway area student, Leighton Branson honored Ms. Chris Grimm. So thank you to all of those students and teachers. And just, everyone know, I'm very proud of all of our students and teachers in Rockingham County, and that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Breeden. I'm, first of all, thank you for everyone showing up tonight, especially the students being here and parents. Thank you for showing up and being involved. I also want to thank the speakers. You know, a lot of times these meetings, they move on, and it's kind of like, it feels like you're almost dismissed, but I hear what you're saying, and I'm, we will definitely look into the things that have been brought up, and they do concern me as a board member as well. So thank you for coming out and being brave enough to be put on the public comment. It's not easy to be on the public comment sheet and get up and speak in front of everyone. So thank everyone for doing that tonight. I have a couple of highlights. My first highlight tonight is I want to recognize Ms. Teresa Warner. Has anyone in here went to McGaquisville Elementary School? Well, I did when I was younger, and my children also went to McGaquisville. And Ms. Teresa Warner is a pre-K teacher out there, and I want to recognize her tonight for her service here in Rockham County Public Schools. In 1994, Mr. Warner was the assistant pre-K teacher at Folks Run Elementary. Ms. Warner taught as the kindergarten teacher at Autobahn Elementary for a year and for three years at Plains Elementary. In 1999, Ms. Warner began the pre-K program at McGaquisville Elementary School, which is awesome, which, which was her dream job all along, she said. She's been serving as the pre-K teacher now for over 23 years and has been the MES Teacher of the Year, RCPS Teacher of the Year, and the Region Five Teacher of the Year for Virginia. That's pretty amazing. I'm, well, Ms. Warner is a master educator with a lifetime of working knowledge, and she's at the top of the list of the best in the business. Ms. Warner is taught, was taught by my son Judah, and I couldn't have asked for a better person and teacher. Ms. Warner is loved by her students, parents, and other MES employees, and by so many within our community. Ms. Warner, I want you to personally, I want to personally say thank you tonight and for all that you have done and will continue to do. The children and parents in Rockham County are blessed and fortunate to have you in our lives. Thank you for all you do and for choosing Rockham County Public Schools for your place of employment. My number two highlight tonight is I want to congratulate the staff and the crew at J. Frank Hilliard for their performance with Annie Junior. We had a chance, me and my wife, and had a chance to take my daughter out, who's six years old, out to the play, and she knew the whole play a lot more than what I did. And she was telling me, "Dad, this is, this part's getting ready to come up." And so I can see my daughter definitely in the school plays like that coming up in the future. She will definitely be a star for sure. So guys, a great job on that. A funny story, I walked in the back door. It was cold, door was open, we walked in it, and a parent saw me, asked me what I was doing. So I appreciate that parent for asking and speaking up, and they, I told them who I was, and they finally, they led me to where I needed to go, because I wasn't sure where to go. I also want to send a shout out to Ms. Ashley Rennick and Amy Kreider. Both are special education teachers out of Riverbend Elementary School. I had an opportunity to visit at Riverbend Elementary, and those two teachers, man, they are passionate about what they do, and I so much love that passion that they carried and with, by speaking with them. They love their kids and they love their job. And I was able, had a time to sit down, just talk with them and hear them, and I just wanted to say thank you publicly to them as well for all they do right now. So with that, Mr. Speaker, or Mr. Chairman, that's all I have.
Dr. Scheichl.
I have a couple of items. Ms. Lor already talked about students recognizing the teachers yesterday, had the chance to attend the Green and White Society induction at Broadway High School. What a fantastic event. Students write essays about the teacher or staff member, could be a bus driver, could be cafeteria staff, could be a custodian, anyone in the building really, over the course of their school career who had the biggest impact on them. And so there were 10 students that are selected and then publicly read the essays in front of those teachers to get their Green and White Society cord for graduation. Those are all seniors, and it was just, again, amazing to see how many of our teachers really have fundamental impact on their students' lives. And oftentimes, those students remember those specific teachers for the rest of their lives and vice versa. The teachers create these amazing relationships, and there were some tears and a lot of laughter, and it was an amazing event. The second one, just last week, some of our students participated in the Model General Assembly Enrichment, where students have a chance to propose legislation in the actual chambers, you know, in the House and the Senate. And two Broadway students, McKenna Campbell and Caleb Coroga, who has previously spoken on a number of occasions actually here, were both selected then, just, you know, two out of the 15 statewide to attend the Conference on National Affairs at Black Mountain, North Carolina from July 2nd and 8th. And then, last but not least, and I'm not going to point her out, but I want to congratulate Dylan Gregory to third place at the SHS Talent Show. I know she's in the room, and I promised her I would mention that, so thank you.
Can we get her room?
Yeah. Thank you all for those highlights. Man, I'm going to give my age away, but I started McGaquisville in Brown Memorial when the old store burned down, so.
I know exactly.
I came through there too. But I want to, first of all, begin by thanking Ms. Lor and the rest of the board for filling in for me at the last meeting at short notice. My wife was at UVA with her mother, where she's undergoing treatments. And I tell you this story just because hopefully it'll help you all out if you have to make a doctor's appointment. I had a 4:30 orthopedic doctor appointment for my grandson, and I thought, well, I can get that done and get home and get cleaned up and be ready to get back to the meeting. The doctor came in to see him at 20 till 6:00. The appointment was at 4:30. So make your appointments early before they get too far behind. So we obviously were not able to get away. I agree with the things that have been said here tonight by my colleagues. You know, we have wonderful students, wonderful staff, and I do appreciate their, their hard work and, and I just hope that everyone will, will be compassionate with those employees and students as we, as we agree and as we disagree on issues. It's really not, they, they are doing their jobs, is what I'm saying. And with that, we will move into action items, and I will begin. We first need to approve our minutes, and I will entertain a motion, if it be the board's desire, to approve those minutes. Or if not.
I move that we approve the minutes as presented. I'm getting there. I'm a little slow tonight.
Thank you, Ms. Lor. Is there a second? Thank you, Mr. Falk. Any questions or comments? Hearing none. All those in favor of approval of the minutes, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed? That is unanimous. Thank you. Bills and mileage?
You have the March bills and mileage in your materials, and I recommend approval of the bills and mileage for the month of March.
Thank you, Dr. Scheichl. Do I hear a motion in support of the superintendent's recommendation?
I move that we support the superintendent's recommendation to approve the March 2022 bills as presented.
Thank you, Dr. McQuilkin. Is there a second?
A second.
Thank you, Mr. Cross. Any discussion? Again, hearing none. All in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed? That, too, is unanimous. Field trips. Dr. Scheichl.
As I said last time, exciting to see field trips happening again, and many of the field trips that we see annually finally again taking place the way we used to have them. I have a number of field trips for your approval. Spots with high school band. One student will travel to All-State Band from April 21st through the 23rd to Christopher Newport and Newport News, Virginia. And then the Technology Student Association trip, April 28th through May 1st, seven students to the Technosphere in Hampton, Virginia. J. Frank Hilliard Middle School, FFA, the State FFA Convention, June 27th through the 30th, 20 students to Virginia Tech in Blacksburg. And then STEM Kid Wind State Competition, April 22nd to the 23rd, eight students to Virginia State University in Petersburg, Virginia. And then finally, Monta Video Middle School TSA State Conference, again, April 28th through May 1st, five students to Hampton, and I recommend approval of all those field trips.
Thank you, Dr. Scheichl. Do I hear a motion in support of the superintendent's recommendation? Thank you, Mr. Falk. Is there a second? Thank you, Dr. McQuilkin. Any questions or comments? Hearing none. All in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed? That is unanimous as well. Thank you. We have, we have a, we have a bid for HVAC control replacement at Lacy Springs Elementary School, and I think Mark Zalinski is going to present that for us.
Dr. Scheichl. Chairman Breeden, members of the board, here to present the bids that we bid, we received for the replacement of HVAC controls at Lacy Springs. There were seven bids, seven firms that were invited to bid, and we received two firms. Those two firms, bids are listed below, and Riddleberger was the low bidder, $138,978. We recommend awarding the contract to Riddleberger Brothers.
And I do recommend approval of the bid as presented by Mr. Klosinski to Riddleberger Brothers in the amount of $138,978.
Thank you. To both of you gentlemen, you've heard the superintendent's recommendation. Is there a motion for approval?
I move we follow the superintendent's recommendation to accept the bid for HVAC controls replacement at Lacy Spring Elementary School as presented.
Thank you, Ms. Lor. Is there a second? Thank you, Mr. Falk. Any questions or comments? If not, all in favor of approval of the bid as presented, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Unanimous. Thank you, sir. Thank you. That concludes our action items this evening. We will move to information items, and we will hear about the CTE local plan for 2223. Mr. Fitzgerald.
Thank you, Mr. Breeden. Chair Breeden, school board members, and Dr. Scheichl. Tonight, for your information, I presented an executive summary of the 202223 Perkins Local Plan. You should have that in your documents. And just so that you know, the Perkins Plan actually funds about half, I would say, of our total CTE budget with local funds covering the other half. Perkins funds are used mainly for equipment, professional development, and just upgrading of labs in CTE programs. So tonight, for information, I bring the budget to you. Please review that. If you have any questions, let me know, and I'm going to ask for your action at the next meeting for possible approval.
Thank you, Mr. Fitzgerald. Thank you.
Thank you.
Board members, you'll have in your packet a financial review for March of 2022, as well as the attendance report for your information. Next, we will move to school board questions, and I will begin this time with Mr. Cross.
I'm, I wanted, first to start out tonight, that I do want to bring up the book by Sherman Alexey, and I have read the book. I know a lot of people question, "Do you read?" I do read. I'm a avid reader. And I did read the book and highlighted places inside of it that I didn't agree with or didn't like, and I'm, it's, it's important that we understand that, yes, we just came out of a, a health pandemic, you know? But America's been going through a moral pandemic for decades. And I've heard it said before, what one generation tolerates, the next generation will accept. And it takes courageous people to stand up and to do what's right. When all the crowds are going in one way, it's, it takes courage for a teenager to stand up and to go the opposite way. It takes courage for a teenager to stand up and look to the bully and say, "It's not, it's not funny to say that. It's not, it's not nice to say those words." It takes courage to go against the grain. And anytime that you talk about removing a book from a library, it's, you always get the pushback that, you know, "Oh, no, you can't do that. You're going to be, you're going to be a book banner," and you do this and that, and that's, that's not the case. It's, it's the case between what's appropriate and what's not appropriate for our children. Then I always get the other pushback is, "Well, if you want to be a Christian, then you can, you know, send your kids to Christian schools and not be in, involved in local governance." But our government was never set up that way. And when you go back and you look between the separation of church and state with Thomas Jefferson, it's nothing like they teach in our history classes. Jefferson, when making that, that statement, was talking to a Baptist minister, and he was reassuring him that just because his denomination was different than the Presbyterians and different than regular denominations, that the Baptists, that the government was not going to step in and say, "Hey, you can't say what you, what you believe in in the United States. You have freedom of religion here." And so with that being said, it's, I did, I did read the book, and what, what, what I don't, what is, what is. And so, with that being said, I did read the book, and what is frustrating is when we talk about equity, and we talk about equity, and we talk about, you know, racism, and we talk about things like that. It's like, as long as you put it in a book, then it becomes okay. And that's not true. Just because you put something in a book doesn't give you the right to say whatever you want to say. And when this book first came up, members of the board, is this book was brought up by parents in our community, not by Matt Cross, not by anyone else. This was brought up by parents in our community. And I would say, just right off the top tonight, this book and the content inside this book is not acceptable moral behavior, values of the majority in Rockingham County in whom we represent. And so, tonight, am I allowed to put up the screens? Okay.
I don't think that there's anything, prayers we put up tonight.
Okay, well, that's the second time I've asked for two pages of this book to be put up. The first time, I didn't go throughout the right channels, and so I got, learned a lesson at the last board meeting. This time, I sent those two to Dr. Schikele and to Mr. Breeden, and they're still censoring me as a board member at a public meeting tonight of a book that's in our public libraries in our middle schools. And the hypocrisy of that is just outstanding, that it's okay to be in our public library in the middle school with 11 and 12 and 13-year-olds who can take that book home and show their brothers and sisters or whoever on the bus, or their siblings at home. But it's not okay to put that up on a TV screen at a public meeting. The hypocrisy of that is just outstanding. That should tell you just right there that it's not acceptable for our children. And I hope tonight, there's just two more of you to be brave and courageous with me and say, "You know what? You're right, Mr. Cross, that this book is unacceptable. And although it may go against the popularity of those who support you or those in the community that like you, I pray that you would do the right thing." We have a pandemic in our schools. You go, I worked in our schools for almost a decade. You go to any public high school, and you'll hear all kinds of language going down the hallways. It's true. But you'll hear it. And if people in the community would walk in and hear some of the things that are said, I mean, I talk with teachers all the time and say, you know, "I get talked to horribly. I don't do anything about it because nothing seems to be getting done in the schools. No discipline seems to be happening." They'll tell me, "No, tell me, I'm not going to do what you say," and there's nothing I can do. And so, we talk about character all the time, and I'm going to get to the book, but we talk about character all the time. But our character is shaped by our morals and our values. And so, we can't have these seven pillars of character and saying, "Hey, we want our kids to follow by these pillars," and then feed them garbage that they can listen to and read to, or any of that in our public libraries. We need, as adults, need to set the standard. I've said for years, garbage in, garbage out. Whatever you feed on is what's going to come out of your mouth when you're squeezed and when you're pressured. And so, tonight, I am going to read some of the passages that are in this book, because I think it's important. Has anyone on the board else, have you read the book? Ms. McQuilkin said, "No." Mr. Falk, have you read the book? Mr. Breeden, have you? No one's read the book. I've sent out emails saying I want to send forth a motion tonight to remove this book, and no one's read the book. In the book, there's a lot of words that are said, that I'm not going to go through all the words, all the filth that's in the book, but they use words like retarded, gay, They use the Lord's name in vain twice in the book. On page 64, it says, "Did you know that Indians are living proof that..." I'm not going to say this word, but it says, "Did you know that Indians are living proof that ends racist slur, F. Buffalo?" Page 64 in the book. It's an unacceptable joke. And what happens, board members, is when this book, you say, "Well, that's not in the content of..." You're taking that out of context. Well, what happens when someone in our schools, in the middle school, sixth, seventh, and eighth grade, all of them are immature? But what happens when they say this joke to a minority that's sitting around to them because they thought it was funny in the book? And then it scars and hurts that minority child within our schools? That's wrong. And what we'll say as adults is that they learned this at home, and it's not something that they learned at home. But what racism is, a learned behavior. But they're learning something, a racist joke like that inside of our public schools. And that's wrong. We should ban that, well, we should remove this book just because that one joke inside this book. That's not a joke. And it's not acceptable. That's on page 64. The book is filled with CRT material and overwhelming bias towards white people. The first question, the study guides, in the study guide at the end of the book asks the reader, "Does the cover make a reference to Junior's internal struggle or a struggle between Junior and the white power structure?" Example of white power on page 35, Mr. P., who was Arnold's white math teacher on the reservation, says, "No, no, it's just a saying. I don't really kill Indians. We are supposed to make you give up, you being Indian. Your songs, your stories, and language, and dancing, everything. We're trying to kill Indian culture." If you've read anything on CRT, you understand that everything's seen through the lens of race, and that white people are oppressors all over the world. Page 45, "Come on, I said. Who has the most hope? White people. My parents said at the same time. I want to go to Reardon. I said, "Reardon is the rich white farm town that sits in the wheat fields exactly 22 miles away from the rez. And it's a hick town, I suppose, filled with farmers and rednecks and racist cops who stop every Indian who drives through." Page 42, Mr. P. tells Arnold, "He wants to tell him something, but he makes Arnold promise not to tell his parents." Kids, if a teacher ever looks at you and says, "I want to tell you something, but I don't want you to tell your parents," walk away from them. We should never be telling, we shouldn't even allow that in a book of saying, "Hey, there's a teacher, someone of authority, I want to tell you something, but I'm telling you, I don't want you to tell your parents." Page 96, and yeah, you need to take that seriously, but you should also read and draw because really good books and cartoons give you a boner. You should get a boner. You have to get a boner. Page 97, "Yes, yes, yes, Gordy said. Now, doesn't that give you a boner? I am rock hard, I said. Well, I don't mean a boner in the sexual sense, Gordy said. I don't think you should run through life with real erect penis. Well, you should approach each book, you should approach life, you should approach each book as you approach life with the real possibility that you might get a metaphorical boner at any time." The sexual content within this book is ridiculous. It's funny that we're getting to smirks tonight because at our last board meeting, it was one of our division leaders that said she taught within the classroom for 20-some years and never one kid would smirk and do things like that. It's interesting. It's okay. I'm not getting on you guys tonight for smirking. The sexual content within this book is unacceptable. But that's not all, the talk about erections. When the school counselor comes to tell Arnold that his sister is dead, the author says this about Arnold, "Yep, I had a big erection when I learned of my sister's death." Page 202, eighth grade, seventh grade, sixth graders, 11-year-olds. Take it home, read it on the book, read the book on the bus going home. It's unacceptable, inappropriate. Of course, there's a whole chapter on tolerance. Page 155, "My grandmother's greatest gift was tolerance. Gay people were seen as magical, too. I mean, like in many cultures, men were viewed as warriors and women as caregivers. But gay people, being both male and female, were seen as both warriors and caregivers. Gay people could do anything. They were like Swiss Army Knives. Of course, ever since white people showed up and brought along their Christianity and their fears of eccentricity, Indians have gradually lost all their tolerance. Where's the outrage for equity for Christians in this book? We live in a very religious community. Always has been since I've been here." Page 225, "I love that tree," I said. "That's because you're a tree fag," Rowdy said. "I'm not a tree fag," I said. "Then how come you like to stick your D. inside knot holes? I stick my D. in the girl trees," I said. I hope two of you at least agree with me tonight. You know, I understand we have policies and procedures on how to remove a book from our library. But as a parent, and for the parents that are here tonight, when something like this is as bad as this, it shouldn't have to go through weeks upon weeks upon weeks in different committees to finally get to us, to finally, we say, "No, that's unacceptable. That's unacceptable." And so, we need to cut the red tape, and we need to say, in certain books like this that have this much inappropriateness in this, not just two pages that I wanted to put up tonight that I got denied by the chairman and by the superintendent, being censored to put this up tonight. Well, we should cut the red tape, do what's right for our community, do what's right for our kids, and remove this book tonight. There should be a memo going out tomorrow to all our libraries saying, "Remove this book from our schools." So I'm asking tonight, Mr. Chairman, having heard the evidence of the inappropriateness of this book, I believe it's our duty as elected officials to reflect the values and morals of our community, and I ask for a motion to remove the absolutely true diary of a part-time Indian by Sherman Alexey from all Rockingham County public schools effective April 12, 2022.
Just to be clear, Mr. Cross, when you say you've asked for a motion, are you making one, or are you asking for someone to make it?
I'm sorry, I am making a motion.
Okay. Thank you for that clarification. Is there a second?
Come on. There's not a second.
Let me say that the process for challenging materials has been used in the past and has This book is not, I've not read it, and I've purposely not read it because if the board, if it does make its way to the board, then I will, because it is incumbent upon me when I make a decision on it through that process to have read it. As I understand it, at its current place, it is only, it is not available to seventh and sixth graders. I think that's correct. So my reluctance tonight to second your motion, sir, is not an endorsement of the book, but it's a vote to not circumvent the policies that we have, or if we circumvent this one tonight, what's next? Now, if there's problems with the policy, we can, you know, we can entertain a change to policy, and it can be vetted, and we can act upon it. So again, my position tonight is not an endorsement of the book or a criticism of the book, but a cry for support for us not to circumvent this policy for fear that others will be circumvented.
So having heard all the evidence that I brought for you tonight in pages and everything, it's still not good enough as a board?
It will go, in my view, and I'm only speaking for myself, it will go through the process, and if it makes it to us as a board, I will make my feelings known about it then, as I've done in previous circumstances like this.
But, Mr. Breeden, I do appreciate what you're saying here tonight for that. I really do. I appreciate your convictions on that. What I'm saying, though, is that when, there are going to be times that books such as this are going to come before the community, and they're going to hear about it, and they're going to see the things in their libraries, it's not acceptable. And when that happens, we should be able, number one, this book should at least, while it's going through the process, should be taken out of the school, off the shelves until then. At the very least, that should happen. But it should be able to cut all the red tape of going through the first process to go to, at the school, and the complaint, done like that route, that, then they do it to the central office, and then they put a committee together, and then if they don't like that, and it finally shows up to here. But I understand that, I understand that on a lot of books that you're talking about, a lot of material. But when it's something as erroneous as this, like when you tell a joke that, such as that, a racial joke in a book, when you talk about such sexual content, I mean, I didn't get to the part where he talks about masturbation and how he's a professional masturbator and all the things he says in there. It's not right. It's not right. And we think that, we don't understand why they act the way they act, well, they get garbage in, and the garbage comes out. And so, all I'm saying is, there needs to be, in certain cases, and I think it's 100% appropriate, is to say, when something as bad as this shows up on our desk as a school board, that we can cut past that red tape and we can say, "Let's make a decision on it." And it's a decision on what's appropriate, what's not appropriate, and I would just say, "This is not appropriate."
Okay. I certainly respect and hear your position with regards to that, and I would just reiterate that my concern tonight is, or my position tonight is not a reflection upon the book, but a desire to have, because I'm concerned about if there's a policy that I want to challenge and others may not, is it okay to just circumvent that policy and bring it here and make a case? Now, I think I can safely say, and someone, correct me if I'm wrong, there will not be any students who will be mandated to read this book. Is that correct?
That's correct. The decision at the school committee back in November was that the book would be restricted to eighth-grade choice, so students have the choice to check it out. It's not a mandated reading in any class.
And it is my understanding that it is at the review process at Central Office now.
That is correct.
Okay.
But that's cool. That's cool. It's a lack of courage we come down to it.
No, it's not.
It is.
No, it's not.
Absolutely.
Look, I'm not questioning your convictions, Mr. Cross. Don't question mine.
I'm saying it's a lack of courage to do what's right, because in our policy...
Well, I suppose someday I'll be blessed enough to know everything like you do. It's not a matter of courage. It's a matter of principle in terms of policy, and I do not like the fact that you're questioning my integrity.
It's a lack of courage.
It's not.
It's a lack to do what's right.
Then yours is a political grandstand.
I don't have no inspirations to build any political career. I've always lived my life, no, you brought it up, I've always lived my life to do what's right.
You have none?
And when you stand up for what's right, people act like this.
Dr. Schikele?
And so, I'm not done. I've actually got one more. No, I've got more.
Do you have any? Okay. Dr. Schikele, any comments?
Let it be known that Chairman Breeden is ignoring me.
We do have reason to enter into closed session. I will entertain a motion in that regard at this point.
Let it be known that Chairman Breeden is ignoring me tonight.
I do have some questions. I'm sorry, I misunderstood your question.
I'm sorry. Sure.
Dr. Schikele, would you update us, please, on where we are in the... Dr. Schike, would you update us please on where we are in the process with Linville Elementary School?
Absolutely. So a few months ago, we brought a potential contract with a landowner to the board and it was approved. However, subsequently, you know, once that conversation had taken place, there had to be an evaluation of the soil by the Virginia Department of Health. And not only was the strip that that contract would have been about, but also adjacent land not suitable, was found not suitable for the ground discharge. And so we had to change direction there. We had previously investigated a potential discharge into the stream. However, there's a downside to that and that is that in order to discharge it into the stream, we have to purchase what's called nitrate credits, even though there's a system in place that cleans it, again, for any remaining nitrates, we would have to purchase these nitrate credits. Years ago, these nitrate credits could be purchased in perpetuity, but that's changed. The nitrate credits are only available for five-year terms and they're not expensive, really. It's a $4,000 expense. We've now asked the company that can provide those, you know, to send us certification that those are available. And if those nitrate credits are available, we can purchase them. And then the cost of the system that would discharge into the stream would be at about the same price as a system that discharges into the soil. Now, the only concern is that these nitrate credits have to be renewed every five years. And so while we're certainly willing to purchase those and then put the system in place, it's important to note that, as we said previously, you know, there will come a time, and this may be a decade out or, you know, longer, who knows, when the need for renovating Linville Elementary comes up. And so at that time, if the renovation cost, let's say, at current cost would be $10 million or so, then it's going to be very difficult to say, we will spend $10 million as a school division, not knowing whether five years later, those nitrate credits will be available. So I think that will be a decision at that time, if the board wants to still continue, you know, with that system. At that time, once renovation comes up, there would have to be a decision whether maybe nitrate credits become available again that are in perpetuity. But if they're only five years, then it's, you know, renovating for $10 million, not knowing whether you can then continue operating five years later will be very difficult. So it's, again, we've talked about this before and it's certainly a wrinkle due to the nature of the soil there. So there's no suitable land for the, for that type of discharge. And so that's the most up-to-date information. We're still waiting for the company to confirm the credits. And again, then we can decide whether to move forward with that stream discharge. So that's the latest from Linville Elementary and all the attempts we've made, you know, to keep that school open and also to find ways that are environmentally appropriate and would be approved by VDH, but also recognizing that there are some, you know, limited options, you know, in these kind of five-year increments.
Okay, and go ahead, I'm sorry. Well, no. All right. And who are the credits purchased from the federal government or the?
I'd have to check that for you. Yeah, it's not the federal government. I think it's, well, I don't know who, whether it's VDH or DEQ, but we'll provide you with that information. That simply VDH wouldn't approve it if we don't have the nitrate credits.
Right.
So I think in general, you know, when you have these credit kind of setups, it is when, you know, we have a system that requires those, you know, to keep the overall nitrate levels at a certain level that's environmentally appropriate, then there are organizations who actually have these credits because their systems are that much cleaner, they can sell those credits to someone else who needs them. So that overall, sometimes that happens with, for example, CO2 emissions, you know, if you build a power plant and that power plant has certain level of CO2 emissions. If another facility is that much cleaner, there's a, you know, an overall limit of how much CO2 can be produced, then one company can sell these credits that they accumulate so they get credit for that to other organizations. And I think it's a similar setup. So who we would actually get them from, I'd have to check again what the name of the organization is, but it's not a governmental entity.
In the interim, I'm assuming we're continuing to pump the septic system?
That's correct.
And we're looking for a more long-term solution, but we are keeping the students and staff and everyone safe in the meantime.
Absolutely, yeah. We're still operating under pump and haul and again, the plan is still, if it is financially feasible, to continue to keep Linville operating. But again, it's just a different approach now and it extends kind of the time period for finalizing the project.
I am going to say before I move on, Mr., I'm going to finish saying, you can end the meeting, but I'm going to finish what I had to say. So our policy, GBAA, maintaining professional staff and student boundaries, you can go to that, GBAA, and it states in there that all these foregoing examples equally apply to all students and school personnel regardless as to whether the other parties are the same sex, sexual orientation, gender. The use of homophobic language and anti-gay slurs, unwelcome art, acts of verbal, non-verbal, written, graphic or physical conduct. So I'm asking tonight that GBAA, we're violating that through this book in our libraries. So please go tonight and look at our code GBAA and see that this is violating that as well. Thank you. That was very rude of you, Mr. Breeden.
Thank you all for coming. Please be safe driving home.